All right, it's six o'clock. I'll call the With County Board of Supervisors October 28th, 2025 to order. If you would stand, we have J.R. Gilmour from Real Life Ministries to provide our invocation and remain standing for the playoffs. Mr. Gilmour?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today. We're so grateful, God, for another day. We're thankful, Father, for our community. We're thankful, Father, for these elected officials. We ask that God that you would just help them tonight to make the right decisions for everyone. Give them the wisdom that they need. And, Father, again, we thank you, Father, for every blessing, God, that you've given us in our life. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me see it. I will note that we do have a core with all members present with the exception of our chairman, it's out of town on business, and we do have Supervisor Terry on the phone here, which is permitted by our rules and procedures. With that, we'll move on to citizens time. We have two people, James Eder.
He is not in here.
Okay. Randall Ham.
Good evening, Supervisors, and thanks for the time. I'm here about personal property taxes. I'm a four-year resident of Withville. I grew up in Virginia, forgot all about the personal property taxes when I moved away for a very long time, and now that I'm back, I've begrudgingly paid them every year. But last year, I owned a pretty expensive pickup truck that I sold on January 12th. As you're aware, you guys don't authorize the, what's the word for it?
Proration.
Proration of, thank you for that, personal property taxes. I'm here tonight just to ask, has that been considered? And if it has, why it hasn't been pursued? Proration, that is. And if it hasn't been, if there's anything I need to do to move in that direction? I've done a little research. It looks like I could do, you know, I forget the word for that, too. Basically, we get a bunch of signatures.
Petition.
Petition, thank you, to get something moving. But I imagine you guys, this isn't the first time it's been addressed. So with that, has it been considered? And would it be again?
I don't think we've considered it.
I don't think we've had that conversation.
No, I am not aware of any time in any recent history that anything has come up on consideration of proration of the taxes. Everything's as of January 1st, so yes.
Would that be something that you guys would consider? And I ask because, you know, I sold the truck on January 12th. I'm going to pay the taxes. I'm not asking for any change to the rules as they are today. But January 12th, and my tax bill for the truck was $8.98, $94 after tax relief. You know, if that were prorated, it'd be far less than 100 bucks. And that, you know, that's not going to make or break me, but I'm sure there are a lot of families here who buy and sell vehicles throughout the year, paying two tax bills for two vehicles that you own part of the year. Well, it's just not a fair tax policy. Is that something that you guys would consider? Or would a citizen need to take action?
We could take it to the board.
We could certainly look at it. It would be, it could be proration both ways. So if you sell your truck January 12th, then there's also a proration of a new vehicle that you bought on January 13th. It may be more expensive than your other truck. So it's something that the board can look at. We can look at with the Commissioner revenue.
Yeah, I understand the catch-22, but I think that would be a more accurate taxation. It's sort of like mills. We're not, mills taxes, we're not paying for food. We don't eat. This seems a bit off, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's how we have signed up to speak for citizens time. So I'll close citizens time. We'll move on to the payment of invoices. All members have received a packet and had the opportunity to review it. Is there any invoices that you have a question for, or would you like to pull out? All right, here none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices.
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Morgan, a motion by Mr. Morgan, a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions or concerns, comments? Do a roll call vote. We'll start with you, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
All right, so approved.
Mr. Chairman, I would just point out that when our AP department was pulling that information together, Martha, I'm very hot if you can turn that down any. This is probably, there was two trucker payments for about $1.8 million for the Berryfield project. This is probably one of the largest payments that's been approved by you also. I appreciate it.
All right. Move on to the approval of the minutes from a previous meeting. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the minutes as presented? All right, here none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Burnett. Got a second by Mr. Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I oppose, same sign. All right, minutes are approved. Moving on to old business, Mr. Burnet. Do we have any?
I have nothing under old business.
Mr. Hankins.
Yes, sir.
All right. Move on to new business. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
All right, got a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any questions or concern about the consent calendar as presented? All right, here none. Let's do a roll call vote. Start with you, Mr. Morgan.
Aye.
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 All right, so approved. Next item is the school board update with Dr. Poole.
Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, county administrator, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present information to you on With County Public Schools. Everyone should have a copy of the annual budget book. This is for FY '26. And one thing that you will notice, construction money and federal money is no longer in there. Yay! That is nice to have, but it's nice to have it spent, too. So we're back to our normal operating budget, which makes it a much cleaner budget every year. But fortunately for us, we were able to complete a wonderful new building project, and I think everyone's been through there and able to see what we're able to do for roughly $29 million that cost With County '14. So I don't think we'll ever get a better bargain than that, again, as long as, as long as I'm with us, anyway. That's half price. So it's a pretty good deal. One thing that we are looking for future is the potential for one cent sales tax that would help to expedite other projects that we have lined up with Spiller, Fort Chiswell High School, some of the other projects that we have in the future. And as you know, one cent sales tax that we have pushed for with the General Assembly is just an opportunity to allow us to put that on the ballot for citizens to vote to tax themselves rather than the other way around. So that's an opportunity, and all we're asking for is a chance, and I will continue to beat that drum as long as I'm able. I think it's only fair when you have a few localities in Virginia that are allowed that option. Why not everyone? So we'll continue to push that. Now, the budget itself, you know, we presented this, but the information that you will find in here, if you have any questions about it all, please feel free to ask me at any time. You can contact me, Dr. Street, Katrina Hall, anyone at the school board office should be able to help you with that information. But you can see, gives you the list of, not the list of employees, but the number of employees we have in each category, where they're paid from, the categories, and a breakdown of all funding, whether it be state, local, or federal. In addition, you see the revenues and expenditures in each category. Some of the things that I will, and I'll try to keep this as brief as possible, just to update you on where we are. So over the past year, With County ranked 17th in Virginia out of 132 school divisions as far as SOLs. Now, that's down a little bit. However, if you remember, last year, we had less than ideal circumstances for school attendance, whether it be a hurricane, whether it was snow, ice, or take your pick. But we missed a total of 19 days of school. We actually ended up going 168 days. So that's 12 instructional days that we did not, we were not able to make up, and we were still 17th in Virginia. So I think that's pretty, pretty good. And hopefully this year, well, we're already ahead of where we were last year. We didn't miss five days in September because of a hurricane. So that, we're ahead of the game. All of our schools are fully accredited. High schools, when you look at accountability information, that will be coming out soon. Hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we anticipate all of our schools to be fully accredited and several achieving the highest levels in Virginia. I had a couple of things to brag about. You know, we have a number of our testing categories that are top-notch. One thing I want to brag about, I'll brag about Mr. Smith High School down at Fort Chiswell. Fort Chiswell High School had the second highest pass rate for end-of-course English in Virginia, every second. So when you talk about high achievement, you get one more, get one more spot, but out of 313 high schools, they were second. So that, and that is a barrier test to graduation. So when we're second, that says something. So a lot of the other things we have going on, for example, eduprep, we have enhanced those opportunities, and that is basically our PD Day for teachers that we run in conjunction with WCC, sheriff's office, there are a number of organizations that come together, and we do that on the campus of WCC. We expanded manufacturing excellence, healthcare excellence, and we have a teaching excellence program that we're running through WCC, Radford, Emory, and Virginia Tech, as well as a Grow Your Own program. Worked with Radford University to maintain a teacher apprenticeship program. We continued the industrial maintenance program in conjunction with WCC and possibility of Bland County joining that as well for next year. Obviously, we continued the HILLS program with Bristol Smith, Washington, With, WCC, Emory, Virginia Highlands, and Old Dominion. And that is an excellent program. If y'all are unfamiliar with that, it's run on two campuses, one at Old Hospital in Marion and the other at the Higher Ed Center in Abington. And that is an absolute excellent program. It's basically a governor's school for healthcare. And we have a number of students that attend from all three high schools, and they have ambassadors from each of the divisions. And we have multiple ambassadors that represent With County in the HILLS program when you have dignitaries come in or you have people to visit, and they do an excellent job for that. We're very proud of them. One thing that I want to mention, that we have, or we were able to provide last year, 3% raise, a minimum of 3% raise across the board. Thank you for your additional funding. Obviously, we finished the construction at Scott. We have continued the roof replacements. We replaced stadium lights at all three high schools, Fort Chiswell, George With, and Rurutreat over the past two years. We utilized stronger connections and school security grants to in, update our buzz-in and camera systems in a number of our schools. Utilized funding to purchase additional interactive displays. So all of our core area classes in our schools now have interactive displays, these huge screens that help with instruction. We expanded the GOTech program last year when we fully implemented it at Scott. We have that each of the three middle schools, and that is basically the first step into our career pathways in high school. So GOTech gives all their middle school students an opportunity to explore different programs, different professions. And I tell this to everyone, it's just as important to know what you don't want to do is what you want to do. If you can eliminate some things up front, that's going to save a lot of heartache and a lot of parents' money later on if they tend to attend college. We maintain the RBT and BCBA positions and, as well as the substance abuse prevention specialists, and that's been a great addition for With County Public Schools. Kerry Klein does a wonderful job in that. Utilized grant funding to make sure that we kept our job coach and JVG positions at each of our high schools. And we'll brag on this one, getting ready to leave very soon, but Dr. Becky James was recognized nationally for a high-achieving administrator with the JVG program. That's jobs for Virginia graduates. So very, very proud of her and all the work that she's put in to that program. Fully staffed with reading coaches and reading specialists at the elementary and middle schools, as well as two math specialists at the middle and elementary schools. A lot of other things. Those are the high points. I'll try to keep this as short as possible. But if y'all have any questions, certainly feel free to ask. One thing, still working on options for the cannery. They've actually met today and moving ahead. Have prices, so see what we come up with.
Yeah, good deal. I know it's important to the community, so.
Yeah, we took, took Mr. Bear on a tour of the cannery today. He was able to, able to see some of the equipment in there.
Nobody was in there doing anything for me to sample. That was the only problem.
I mean, just for me, again, when you, when you presented the HILLS program a year or so back, I mean, that is awesome for this part of the country, right? Especially this part of the state. I know the governor's school is a good thing, and we've got students that goes down there, but if they can actually focus in the curriculum that they're going in, or they want to go that way, and get hands on it, that just sets them that much further ahead of everybody else. So I do appreciate that and the promotion of that. Mr. Morgan and I got to go to the GOTech down at Fort Chiswell High School. I missed the other ones at the other schools. And I can't speak for Mr. Morgan, but I was just amazed at the, the tools and the programs that they are exposed to. I might have to show as a different profession if I had that when I was in school. So it is awesome to see that. So, and those kids are not afraid to use it.
No.
You know, here we are looking at like, they're just jumping right in. So it's good, good to hear.
Those, that GOTech program at each of the three middle schools, that is an absolutely great thing for them to be able to get their feet wet, to see what's out there, to see what's available. And that's just the first step that leads into our pathways in high school. You know, we focused on, you know, with manufacturing, with healthcare, and with education, those are the three largest employers in southwest Virginia. So it doesn't mean we have forsaken everything else, but with manufacturing excellence, healthcare excellence, and teaching excellence, those three things we feel like give an opportunity that we can really expand on. Now, the pathway programs and JVG gives you opportunities to shadow other professionals while they're in high school and get involved in those activities. The tech center, an absolute great resource. You know, WCC, we're able to work with them on a lot of different programs. So we feel like the opportunities that you and I had a long time ago coming out of With County, we've expanded just a little since, since then.
No, that's good stuff. Anybody else have any questions or comments from the doctor pool?
One thing, just back to the cannery. I've seen Mr. Bear's got something in his packet, but are we seriously looking at relocating it? I hope.
We are certainly trying to find locations, sites that we may be able to, to work with to do that.
Yeah. I mean, if it's, in the situation we're in, if, you know, it might be good timing. I've never understood why it's located where it is, but.
Yeah, we had.
Unless there's something I'm missing.
When you look at where it's located now, it's less than ideal. I mean, in today's climate. At one time, you know, that's, that's one thing. Now, it's completely different. And you look at some of the size, some of those, pressure cooker, that's literally, you know, four of them, this big around and this tall, that's a lot of, that's, that's something with the, and you have the number of people that are in and out of that facility. So if we could get it away from the school campus, or at least out of the building, that would be ideal. And when you look at the age on some of the plumbing and some of the other things, it's a matter of time before that starts to go as well.
Exactly.
We've repaired a lot of it, but some of it's getting ready for replacement. So.
I'm hopeful that we can find something.
Yeah, it's, we're, we're trying also to find any grant opportunities to do so. And as expected, that's challenging in the process, but we're still, still trying to poke all of those and see what we can come up with. Just a question for you. You got a $65 million budget, 40 million of it's state, 20 million of it's county, so only 2.6 is federal, not including cafeteria, which most of your cafeteria is federal. Any impacts that you foresee coming in the near future from what's going on on the national level? DSS has been having meetings over the last couple of days and giving updates on it. Are you seeing anything on your side?
To be determined. I mean, it, right now, no. But we have, the biggest pot of money that we receive, just a single pot, you have sped, and you have Title I. So you have Title I and Title 6B. Those are the two largest individual pots that we get from the federal government outside of food service. So right now, that money's available. I don't know for how long. That could change tomorrow. But right now, we're okay. And that, that money is specifically for those programs. It's not outside. So it's not spread throughout the budget. It is central to that. So you have Title I, that's a large one. Title 6B. Title II funds a couple of positions, but that's kind of changed with the guidance over the past couple of years. So it, the effects of that one would be negligible. So to be determined on the others.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. If y'all need anything.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Right. So the next item on the agenda is the Health Department funding and service agreement?
Yes, every year, they, they send us an agreement. This is in alignment with what you all approved in the budget. I would request authorization to sign the Health Department agreement.
All right, I'll entertain a motion authorizing county administrator to sign the agreement?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morgan. Any questions on that? We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 All right, so approved. Anything else under new business, Mr. Bear?
No, sir, just staff reports.
All right, moving on to staff reports. Deputy county administrator, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a lengthy report tonight. First up is a request from Jan Care Ambulance. Under our designated emergency response agency, we require that anyone that wants to do patient transports in With County apply through that. Jan Care has put in the application and do have an attached memorandum to go through. This is a new-to-Virginia transport agency. They operate primarily in West Virginia. They're a medical transport agency there. They're 55 years old, so they've been around for a while. They operate in 11 counties. In five of those, they're the primary 911 agency. So you call 911 and one of their ambulances shows up as a contractor. So they are licensed by the West Virginia Office of EMS. I did check with the agency. They are in good standing with the office. They do operate in West Virginia under a variety of limited liability corporations, and most of those are specific to the counties that they operate in. In Virginia, it would operate, as I understand it, as a division of its McDowell County, West Virginia LLC. They do claim to be the largest EMS provider in West Virginia. They have over 400 employees. They do not have an office here, but have listed With County Community Hospital as a temporary base of operations. You also have in front of you a letter from Teresa Dix, the CEO at the hospital, requesting this. I understand the interim CEO was interim in reaching out to Jan Care and asking them to consider operating transports here. Ms. Dix supports that same effort. It's hard to get transport agencies here. We've got, Mr. Morgan asked before the meeting, Richardson, Richardson Ambulance is the primary one that they use now. You see their trucks parked up here on Main Street. We do have a couple of others that we've licensed. C-Trans or Abington Ambulance, under the same parent corporation, are licensed to operate here, but they don't, don't do a lot. And we've also recently talked to Hospital Home, but they haven't established any base here. We've only done a couple of transports with them, and that was for bariatric patients out of the Mount Laurel Care Center. So we don't have enough help, you know, as the primary EMS agency, With County Emergency Services, can't do those transports. We just don't have enough time, staff. It really wears on equipment. And sometimes, you know, really all you need is a van when we have full-size ambulances. So there are a lot of reasons why we, we can't and shouldn't do those. So this agency would bring on a Virginia licensed operational medical director. They have to apply for licensure through the Virginia Office of EMS, but their catch-22 is they can't do that until they come to you and ask if, if it's okay for them to operate in With County. Our education coordinator does have some experience with them. He has operated in West Virginia, and he said he's familiar with them. Didn't have real close experience, but he hadn't heard of any issues with them. If something were to arise in the future, we do have ways in our DARA plan that we can address any issues or problems that come up. We do have a couple of representatives from Jan Care here tonight that can answer any questions that you may have. But staff sees reason to recommend to you that you authorize Jan Care to operate as a transport agency here. As a transport agency, they would primarily be responsible for getting patients from hospital to home or hospital to rehab facility. They would not be answering 911 calls unless we get to the status where we don't have any ambulances available, and then 911 can dispatch them to calls as a backup to our system if, if they're needed. So with that, I'll answer any questions, or the gentleman from Jan Care will be, be able to answer any as well.
So, Mr. Hankins, I'm assuming that they're operating out of the hospital right now as a temporary officer. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We haven't established a permanent residence.
But you would be looking to establish a permanent.
We would, yeah. Yeah, we're, we actually are scheduled to look at 2668 Pepper's Ferry Road. I guess you all had a little different city and county ordinance than we're used to. It gets tricky with us because we have overnight occupancy, so I've been going down the road to see exactly what zoning and what type of regulations we have. We have to have sprinklers in West Virginia. I'm going down the pathway with the fire marshals right now to determine whether that's, we have to have that here or not. So, but yeah, as a temporary base, we would set up at, at the hospital. They have a room for us there.
Anybody else have any questions? The only other question I had, you answered it about the license of Virginia, so it makes sense. It's.
It's needed. So we welcome you.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve Jan Care ambulance service.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Morgan. Does that, anybody have any other questions or concerns? Here none. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Morgan?
Aye.
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 All right, so approved.
Thank you all, and I'll be in touch with, with you gentlemen just to follow up.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
The next item, I am working on updating our capital improvement plan. It's a process we go through every year after we adopt the, the main budget. We're a little behind schedule from where we usually are, but we've got some, some unusual things to consider. This is where we try to project out over the next five years what our major capital needs are, just so we can be prepared and plan for those. If you have requests of things that I need to include, I would ask that you would try to get those to me by October 31st, just so I can, can try to get you a draft plan that you can consider in November and December.
And I will add to that, if you know of any roads that residents have talked to you about that may be revenue sharing roads, VDOT does require, as part of our revenue sharing applications, that we show that they're on a comprehensive, or capital improvements plan. So we can always add and amend if we need to, but if there's, there's any roads that you currently know that may fall under that, let us know, and we'll add that to it also.
And I'm sure we've got the water and the emergency services, fire and rescue on that as well.
We do, and I, I've been adding a lot to that over the last few weeks.
He's wanting to see how big y'all's red pen is when you finally see it, so.
If you don't ask, you don't get.
And, and I will add, I've talked to Dr. Poole as well from the school side to be, you know, but they've got ongoing maintenance capital and things like that, but also like the projects he talked about, the Fort Chiswell and the Spiller and all that.
The, the next item I have is asking you to make a determination in line with one that was made by the city of Fort Worth, Texas, that program called Operative IQ is provided by Soul Source. Operative IQ is an EMS-specific inventory management program. It helps us to manage our pharmaceuticals and our medical supplies that go on our ambulances. The city of Fort Worth has a much larger procurement program than we do, so I would tend to trust their judgment when they determine that this is the only provider for this type of service. I would just ask that you authorize us to proceed with purchase through, for Operative IQ as outlined in the memorandum. Uh, I would just ask that you authorize us to proceed with, uh, purchase through, um, uh, for, uh, Operative IQ as outlined in the memorandum.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Got a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second? Got a second on Mr. Morgan. Does anybody have any questions or concerns with the request? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
Uh.
So approved.
Thank you. Next up, I was gonna talk about a burn ban. We are getting some precipitation this week, so, um, I, I don't think we, we have anything pressing there. Uh, but if our conditions turn dry again, we, we may have to do that, just because things have been so dry, uh, this, this summer and fall. Uh, under our grants, uh, Ms. Williams has secured a fifteen-hundred-dollar grant from the Walmart Spark, uh, program. Uh, it's a grant made to our emergency services office, and staff intends primarily to use that to supply our EMR and EMT education materials for volunteer fire departments. I would ask for your, uh, approval and that you, uh, amend and appropriate the budget, uh, appropriately with that, the fifteen-hundred dollars as outlined in the memora- uh, memorandum.
All right, hearing the motion, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Got a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lawson. Any questions on the grant? All right, just, um, Ms. Williams does an outstanding job on that. Just thank her. I mean, she's always getting, finding grant money and, and, uh, she does an awesome job with that, so.
She, she really puts in the effort, and I appreciate that. A great.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Morgan?
Uh.
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 All right, so approved.
Thank you. Uh, just, uh, a quick update on codification. Uh, I've been working on this project for a little over two years. Uh, we are now in the final edit stage. Uh, it's taking all the ordinances that have been adopted by the, the board, um, o- over the years and putting them in a single code. It's organized, it's indexed, it's easily searchable. It'll be added to your website as a, a tool that people can, can use to see what ordinances, uh, are in effect and, and what, uh, what rules govern, uh, their communities. So, um, happy to be moving that, that project, uh, toward its, its completion. Um, our, uh, provider, Municode, they need about three or four months to do the final printing and get us the bound copies. And then we'll ask the, the board to do, um, a, uh, an amendment and reenactment resolution that formally adopts and puts that code into place. But, uh, we're, we're that much closer, uh, as of last week. So, uh, happy to be moving that one along. Uh, you all know the website has, has been launched. Um, it generally went pretty well unless you were in our building. Um, we, we had to overcome a few technological challenges before we could see it in our building. Uh, a couple of DNS settings that had to change, but, uh, you know, once we did that, uh, we, we too were able to enjoy the new website and use it as, as the tool that we, uh, we needed, so, um, ha- happy to have that one in place. We've received some positive feedback. We've got some folks that are signing up for notifications under that. So, just want to encourage folks, go on our website, you know, uh, there, there's several links to the notify me, uh, page, and you can pick and choose. If, if you wanna be notified about one thing or fifty things, you can, you can pick what you wanna hear about.
Spe- speaking of the website, I was gonna, might as well bring it up now, but the, uh, Second Amendment thing that happened with the town, um, was supposedly happened because they were following the county. That's what they said at the meeting. They were following the county. And what they're referring to is, on the website, under Parks and Recreation, there's a thing there that says, "No firearms in the park." Uh, it does have an e- exception at the bottom, except for e- except as.
As permitted.
Uh, which, which basically says, you know, you can do it. Um, I, I highly recommend, or a motion if I need to, that we take out the word firearm from that website. And it, and it can read fireworks and explo- explosives, but I don't think we need to have firearms on there. I don't think any other member on here, I know most, I mostly feel about firearms, and I don't think our intent was that it have firearm on there when we made that resolution.
Ms. Williams did some research, and, and that, that segment, uh, part, part of the stuff that is on our website came over from the old website. Um, some, some of the language has been there for a while. That language was placed there in two thousand and ten. I'm not sure what, what started that. Um, you know, we, we'll do what the, the board directs us to do on that. Uh, you, you're, you're right. It's not something we've been actively enforcing.
I mean, I think in two thousand and nineteen, uh, it was, uh, the ordinance was approved to be a sanctuary county, correct?
A resolution, not an ordinance, but yes.
A resolution, correct, so.
Do we need to have a motion to remove that, or will, will y'all just remove it?
If you, the consensus of the board will.
Yeah.
We'll just go ahead and amend the language.
Yep.
Uh, I, I did, I did research the, did research the ordinances at Mr. Terry's request last night, and we don't have any, any references that I could find to limiting the use of, or limiting the possession of firearms, um, on our facilities.
And, and thank you for the, doing the legwork on that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Anything else to say?
Um, just to mention, uh, our, our land use classification. I've told you that the staff met with the Farm Bureau at its annual meeting, October thirteenth, talked about a draft land use classification system and, and why, uh, it, it could be needed. Um, we are gonna try to schedule some additional public meetings and public input sessions on that. So if you've got groups that you want us to talk to, uh, let us know. We'll, we'll try to reach out to those and, and schedule time where we can go in and talk about, you know, some of the issues and problems that come up when you don't have any sort of land use classification. And then, um, our, uh, CAD project for our dispatch center, uh, that, that is proceeding. Um, we've got a few holdups. One of those is data conversion from the old system to the new system. Uh, so we're, we're gonna meet tomorrow and talk about a workaround for that. We'll probably just go live with the new system and then do a retrospective conversion, bring the old data over after we've, we've gone to the new system. That seems to be the cleanest way for us to, to make this work. Still trying to work toward, trying to get that new system in early in, in the new year. And then, um, our apparatus purchasing, uh, our new ambulance is expected to be here by mid-November. And we have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for the Baron Springs, uh, new fire truck, uh, in early November. Uh, still trying to pin down that date, but, uh, planning for early November. And then, uh, if you're not doing anything on Saturday, um, there's an equipment turn-in party for our, uh, football, uh, players. Uh, this is the first time we've done something like this. It's gonna be at Asia Park, so as they come and they turn in their equipment and it gets checked in, there's gonna be some games and some activities for them to do there. Uh, I think it's a, a good, uh, innovative approach by our new, um, recreation director, and I'm excited to see how many people we have come out. I know the town teams have already turned in their equipment. This is not something that we're gonna exclude kids from, just because they've already turned in their equipment. It's sort of a celebration of the end of the football season.
Times?
I believe it's from one to four on, uh, on Sa- uh, from one o'clock to four o'clock on Saturday, I believe it's the, the time, so.
Thank you.
And, uh, folks may wanna keep an eye out on our social media pages for rec, just to make sure if something comes up, you know, weather-related or, uh, other problems, uh, that they'll announce any changes that, that come up, um, for the schedule there. Uh, that's it. Uh, I've got a couple of other things in there, but, um, if you've got questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Does anybody got any questions for Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hankins. County Administrator, Mr. Byrne?
Yeah, uh, just a couple of action items. Number one, we applied for wastewater technical assistance funds from Mount Rogers. This is, as you all remember, we were looking at beginning to study for upgrades to our wastewater treatment plant or, uh, potential future sites if we need to expand what that. We did receive forty thousand dollars. I would just request you all authorize County Administrator to accept those grant funds.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the County Administrator accept the funds as presented. Got a motion by Mr. Morgan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions on that? Do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Uh.
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 All right, so approved.
Uh, the second is, uh, as we're preparing the board package, we got the letter from DMV. We got six hundred and fifteen dollars this year. We'd use that, that has to be used for the dog and cat sterilization program. I would request you all, uh, authorize the acceptance of the six fifteen and amend and appropriate that amount to thirty-five oh one, four-three-zero, one-five-zero.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for, as presented.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Burnett. Any questions on that? Do a roll call vote. Mr. Morgan?
Uh.
Uh. Uh.
Uh.
All right, so approved.
And then the rest of mine is just, uh, informational purposes. If there are any questions, any of them, let me know. I will mention, um, uh, that's Dr. Poole about the federal shutdown. Uh, DSS has been contacting me. I've been sharing emails with you all as, as they share any information to us. Uh, very fluid situation, uh, from the state side and, and what the state's helping cover on some things. So, uh, we'll keep y'all apprised as we do that. Uh, on our new River Region Water Authority plant, um, we, we do have, uh, about a million dollars, million dollars or so left from EDA, uh, that, uh, we're waiting a couple drawdowns on it. Um, we, we've got enough, uh, funds in our reserves to, uh, to hold us off, uh, until, as, as, as long as this doesn't go on until February or so, uh, we, we will be okay. So we hope it'll resolve by that time. But, uh, we're continuing to watch, uh, just, um, any of the funding or anything we have. If you have any questions on anything, please do not hesitate to let me know.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Mr. Byrne? All right, thank you, Mr. Byrne. Moving on to County Attorney, Mr. Fother.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I don't have anything to report at this time.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to Board Reports. Budget Committee, uh, the Budget Committee met on October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five and recommends approval of the budget amendment in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars for account forty-one hundred dash four-seven zero-zero-six-four to allow for the expense of revenue sharing for bentwood funds as needed. Well, coming from a committee, it doesn't need a, a second. Mr. Morgan?
Uh.
Uh. Uh.
Uh.
So approved. That's all. It was from the Budget Committee. We'll move on to the Board of Supervisors' time. Uh, Mr. Morgan, we'll start with you.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cook?
I have none at this time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Lawson?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Burnett?
I have a couple of, um, uh, I received several emails from a resident about looking at our no- noise ordinance. Uh, I reached out to Mr. Bear, and, uh, and he worked with the sheriff, and there wasn't a whole lot we could do. And it'd be interesting if we could look at the noise ordinance again, see if there's some common sense things we could address to, to help. I don't know how many other people received that email, but I'd be willing to share it. I'd also, uh, appreciate the report from the rec director in the building prevent reports. I noticed a change. They're really easy to read and understand, so pass that along. And that's all I have, Chairman.
All right, thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, um, do you wanna refer the noise ordinance to the Buildings and Grounds Committee for a first review? Or send it to, I mean, we can send an email to all of you all, but you all wanna start there with it?
Um, we could, we could refer it to the Buildings and Grounds.
Okay. All right.
Is that good?
Yep.
Mr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I've got, just remind everybody that I think a week from today is the election day. Uh, please pray up, study up, and know who you're voting for, because of elections, I've said this many times. Elections have consequences, and if you don't believe that, take a look what's gonna take place. They take a place across state. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Um, so I've got several things. Uh, first thing, I talked to, um, Chairman Vault this afternoon, um, and just, uh, he let me know that, uh, Charlie Atkinson is the chairman from Smith County Board of Supervisors. His wife passed away. Uh, keep that family in your thoughts and prayers. Mr. Byrne, I know you had mentioned a car, but if we could send some flowers or food or something to that family, uh, from, from the board, I think that would be, uh, appropriate for us to reach out. Charlie's a good guy. Uh, you know, he's, he's been a good person to reach out to if, if you had any questions or anything. So, I know, Mr. Byrne, you've probably worked with him a lot longer than.
Yes.
Ms. Lawson, probably most of the rest of us here, so, um, yeah, definitely keep that in, keep that family in your thoughts and prayers. Uh, the next thing I got is the cattle shoots. I've actually, uh, asked about that, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Um, and it was about in regards to one individual that was wanting those shoots, Mr. Byrne. However, I've had several other, um, groups reach out. They're interested in that. So if, if, uh, Jimmy can verify that they have no use for them, if we could maybe put that out as we discussed, the gov deals.
Yeah, that's, uh, what, what I'd like to do is just go ahead and, uh, uh, confirm that, and we'll go ahead and work with Ms. Collins, put them on gov deals, and when we do, we'll, we'll notify all of you all, and you all can let people know.
I appreciate that. Uh, the next thing I got, um, so on the tax system that we talked about, uh, nothing's never been brought to the board to vote on for approval. Um, there's been some conversations had by the Commissioner and the Treasurer blaming us for the delay on taxes, which, you know, it really bothers me. If, I just want everybody to know, and our citizens to know, if we would've voted on that software today, or two months ago, six months ago, it wouldn't impacted this year's tax for being late. You're looking at twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight roughly, depending on be- how busy they were. I know Mr. Hankins and I had that conversation. So somebody needs to talk to the Commissioner and the Treasurer. I know they elected to, but they're not doing the se- doing themselves any favor by throwing us under the bus for their lack of execution on their part. We, we are not driving any delays on the taxes. That's coming from their office. Uh, we give them everything that they want. Um, so I don't, uh, somebody needs to address that. I mean, if we need to bring them in here, we can address that. Uh, but they need to understand that if they wanna blame somewhere else, it just makes them look worse. If, if they have to make us look bad to make them look good, they're the problem. And that's all I'll say about that. Uh, Mr. Hankins, if you could do me a favor, uh, if you could work with, uh, Alicia on the youth gym times. They, it seems like they're having some trouble scheduling some time for the gyms, uh, for the youth basketball time. And I think there may be some travel teams that's involved in that. So if we can cater more to the county teams than they will the travel teams.
Yes, sir. We, we've consistently had problems with that over the last three years, but it seems like it's getting worse. And a- as we have more travel teams trying to compete for that space, it, it's becoming more of a problem. So yes, we're, we're trying to get the, um, the, the schools to, to do the rec teams before they schedule any, any other users.
And, and I know Alicia's doing an outstanding job, and, and I'm sure she can work through this far, so, um, but yeah, I appreciate that. Um, one other thing I just wanna throw out there, uh, that was brought to my attention. So all the students in the counties having to pay to get into sporting events at each school. Um, like a season pass is like a hundred dollars. Well, if you've got a family that's got more than one child, that could be a burden on these families. Is there anything that we can do to help these students out? You know, when I was in school, if you was a student, especially a student athlete, you didn't have to pay to get into the other events. Uh, so I would ask that we look at that, work with the school board to see if there's anything that we can do to, to try to ease some of the burden, um, on some of these families that may not be able to afford, you know, paying for multiple fees for their students going to, or for their children going to games to the school that they attend, that they're already paying to go to school. So if we could do that, I'd appreciate that. Last thing I got, um, I know, um, there's a couple of people in the room that was here last night. Mr. Hankins was there. Uh, so we did attend an event last night, uh, for the Southwest Crossroads Coalition, uh, for orphans and foster children. It was, it, it was an awesome event. It was very educational for me, uh, to see some of the stuff and hear some of the numbers. Uh, but, uh, the one thing that I wanna say is, we all ought to be proud of Chuck Parnell and the job that he does for the county and the way he represented us when he got up to speak. Uh, he done an outstanding job. If you haven't watched that video of Chuck speaking, you need to watch it. We were there, Mr. Hankins and I was there in person, uh, and listened to him speak. Chuck handled himself very professional, and everybody in the county ought to be proud that Chuck is EM one, leading us. In, for he pours his heart into. That's his love is EMS services. So he, he done an outstanding job. I told him last night, but I know we had this board meeting, and I knew I could do it publicly a- and get it on record. So, uh, Chuck, Chuck was very humble there, but he done an outstanding job, and I just wanna recognize Chuck Parnell.
If, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, I would also say that Mr. Smith represented the, the board very well, gave a very heartfelt speech, uh, to, to welcome folks in. And you should be proud of the way that, uh, Mr. Smith represented you last night. I'm not just saying that because he's here, because he's your acting chair tonight. It, it's legitimately, you know, uh, a heartfelt feeling for me that, you know, the, the speech last night was, uh, one that, that needed to be heard.
No, thank you, sir.
And to support, Mr. Hankins, that is what he relayed to me earlier as well about both of our people. But he talked about heartfelt and a very good opening remarks from you, so thank you.
Just, uh, Chuck, Chuck was the man. That's, that's the thing. I was just honored to be in the same room, so. Is there anything else to come before the board?
Just closed meeting session, Mr. Chairman.
I was about to send this home, but. Uh, so I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session under Code of Virginia, two-point-two, thirty-seven-eleven, A-one Personnel Salary.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, would you hold on and allow me to correct one mistake I did make?
Yes, sir.
Um, I did not, I have one additional item that I need to add to my agenda. In front of you is a vacation of right-of-way form. Um, this, um... Um, Ms. Shelton has previously provided this to me, I talked to Mr. Fothering a little bit about it today. There's a letter there, and then on back of that letter is an old, 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 old map, it's Flatbook 2, page 63, which goes way back. On the back of it is a, a zoom in of section 13 of that map. That is the old right-of-way that they're, or alleyway that they're referring to between their property, it's never been developed. I would request that you all set a public hearing for our November 25th. Is that the correct date, Ms. Collins, 24th? November 25th meeting, uh, to consider an ordinance to vacate that right-of-way.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to set the public hearing. I got a motion by Mr. Morgan, do I have a second? Got a second by Mr. Burnett, any questions or concerns with that? All right, here none, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Thank you, I apologize, now you can go to closed.
All right, so now I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session under 2.2-3711A1 Personnel Salary. Got a motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Morgan, all in favor, 65% say aye, aye, anybody opposed? All right, we're now in closed session. I'll entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Burnett, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morgan, all in favor, 65% say aye? Anybody opposed? All right, Mr. Moore, you wanna read the certification? I think it's over, since Mr. Terry is not present physically. Hey, can you read that, Mr. Terry?
You should have it memorized.
You don't have it memorized? All right, Mr. Morgan's gonna pick you up tonight.
Both sides or just this side? Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors, that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meetings requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
Did you make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I get a second? Got a second by Mr. Burnett, I'll, uh, do, do a roll call, or can we just do it on one?
Roll call.
All right, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Morgan? All right, so approved, any more business come before the board?
Nope.
Ms. Collins, you have anything? All right, we will be adjourned, thank y'all.